I want everyone to know that. Are you going to report, Mr.?
Oh, so honest. What's up, buddy?
Are you going to report, Mr.? Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco and Barber? Yes. County Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
County Commissioner Narra?
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Here. Correspondents?
Each Commissioner can provide the list of correspondents who attended the court office since our last meeting as correspondents we kept on the file in office of the court.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls, motion carries, minutes for approval?
Word of county commissioners regular meeting June seventeen twenty twenty one, seven o'clock P. M. And word of county commissioners regular meeting July first, twenty twenty one, at six o'clock P. M.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco and Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. Ordinances, introduction and first reading, the clerk will read ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero one.
County Middlesex, state of New Jersey, guarantees the order of security Middlesex County Improvement Authorities, county guarantee capital equipment and improvement revenue bond, series twenty twenty one, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifteen million two hundred and fifty thousand, and authorizing public hearing to be held August nineteenth, twenty twenty one, at seven o'clock P. M., authorizing publication thereof, consenting to such financing in determining certain other matters in connection therewith.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one dash zero zero one on our first reading? Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco and Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. Director, the clerk will read ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero two.
County Middlesex, state of New Jersey, ordinance number twenty-one dash year two, guarantees the order of security Middlesex County Improvement Authorities, county guarantee parking revenue bond, series twenty twenty one, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed sixty million dollars, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty one, at seven o'clock P. M., authorizing publication thereof, in determining certain other matters in connection therewith.
Is there a motion to adopt? Roll call.
County Commissioner Esco and Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. The forensic commissioners. County Commissioner Chira Bell Esco and Barber?
Thank you, Director Rios. I am pleased to announce that our first payments have been made under the emergency renter assistant program. More daily tenant households have received approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in renter and utility assistance. The payments were made directly to landlords and utility companies. The Middlesex County Intoxicator Drive Resource Center, I D R C, has been holding virtual twelve-hour classes, we assume, since June twenty twenty, in response to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. With the end of the public health emergency, the I D R C has initiated a transition plan to resume in person twelve hours classes at Middlesex County College, Middlesex College, in August twenty twenty one. The Office of Aging and Disabled Services will be distributing a limited amount of farmers' market nutritional program vouchers. This year, seniors will receive five, six dollars vouchers for a total of thirty dollars. The vouchers can be used for fresh products at a steak at Wood Farm Stand and farm markets during the month of July through October. Save today for our next mixed foods event. We will be having a drive-by food truck at Woodbridge Center on July twenty-fourth, from ten A. M. to three A. M. Live off, capital trunk, and our volunteers will remove the donations. You can find more information about these services and ways to gain more by visiting the county website. Thank you, Director, and that concludes my call.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenyon?
Thank you, Director. It's nice to see everybody in person after once in a long time, so it's always a pleasure. Construction is set to commence on the signal replacement at Main Street Mary Avenue in the fourth section of Woodbridge. The new, there'll be new traffic signal equipment, sidewalk, ADA rams, milling and paving are included in this project. The anticipated length of this project is about five months. The Livingston Avenue Complete Streets Project is advancing with an anticipated completion date of September twenty twenty one. Presently, the sidewalk is being constructed in the historic district of Livingston Avenue by Morris to Hale Street, McMillan. Paving and striping anticipated by late August. One hundred and ninety ornamental pedestrian streetlights have been installed by P S E and G from New Street to Elizabeth Street, which now function. And the existing overhead streetlights will be removed by P S E and G. There's no time, no exact time of when they'll be taken down. And then the Middlesex County Office of Planning, their staff has utilized advanced technology this year to significantly improve the efficiency of the county's annual onsite monitoring, inspection, and reporting. That the county is required to conduct every preserved farm that Middlesex County holds to ease mount. Staff developed a field data collector app that syncs to an Art G I S online map, incorporating all the monitoring and inspection reports categories that staff are required to track. Leveraging technology in this way allows for the office of planning staff to save significant time and resources while performing the job with increased efficiency, and greatly improving the quality of the data collected by the county staff in the process. And I just want to thank everybody in my department and throughout the county employees for the work that they've done while we've been going through this pandemic. I know we say it at every meeting, but now that we're the person, I just want to say thank you once again. And that's all I have, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie McCollum?
Thank you, Director. Tonight we introduce ordinance twenty-one dash zero zero one, a fifteen point three million dollar county guaranteed ordinance, which includes the county's portion of ten million as well as funding for other municipalities. This program is financed by fixed rate bonds issued by the M C I A on behalf of Middlesex County and participating municipalities within the county. It is guaranteed by the county and due to the county's triple A bond rating by Standard and Poor's as well as Moody's Investor Service, borrowing costs are lower, resulting in savings for both the county and participating municipalities. Municipalities can finance vital equipment such as police cars and heavy equipment for public works and computers. To continuously keep improving the quality of the program. The advantages of these programs include the ability to finance items using the county's triple A operating, reduces interest rates, and no debt payment required. This year's municipal participants are Park Red, Palmetto, Highland Park, the Broadway and South Park. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chanel Scott-Cowen?
From the Arts, the Arts Institute is in the middle of our Art and Storytime Series, which celebrates America the Beautiful, which stories relate to the rich diversity that makes America so beautiful. Celebrating the mixture of cultures and stories that make America beautiful by joining our Art and Storytime Series every Wednesday at four P. M. As we learn about our country and some of the different people that live here, please visit our website for access to previously recorded content and to register for upcoming events. Our Arts in the Parks Summer Series kicked off this past Saturday with architectural sketching at the East Jersey Old Town Village. Every Saturday, people are invited to come sketch with the artists at different county parks from one to three P. M. from the end of August. This program aims to engage the public in low pressure and a newly friendly art experience and encourage new exploration of some of our most beautiful and accessible public parks in the state of New Jersey. Please visit our county's website to learn more about the Summer Event Series. Registration is not required. Please tell us part of the word about this free outdoor event. From the Office of Career Opportunity, I'm pleased to report that the Office of Career Opportunity is launching a pilot skill up connection site. It's at Sarago Public Library, starting Wednesday, August thirteenth. The pilot will provide virtual career services and onsite workshops. I'm also happy to share that the Office of Career Opportunity is working closely with local companies throughout Middlesex County that have expressed interest in joining the workforce development board. Expanding these pirated partnerships will increase opportunities for career training and job placement for county residents. We continue to encourage our constituents to please contact the Office of Career Opportunity at seven three two seven four five three nine five five for information on job placement and career training services. From the Superintendent of Schools, the Office of the Superintendent of Schools participated in the Department of Education Equity Training led by Dr. Eddie Ferguson of Temple University. All students will be back in school for full-time immersive instruction by the start of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Districts are also preparing for the Smart Start assessment in the fall. From the Office of Cooperative Extension Services, our Office of Cooperative Extension Services, in collaboration with County Geographic Information System, and our Marketing Department have launched Grown in Middlesex, an interactive map that can be used to find access to Middlesex grown produce. Our Office of Cooperative Extension Services also continues our virtual and field technical assistance to our farming communities and has successfully retained fifty participants for a three-year beginner farmer training program for farming, for on-farming training. This is Incubator and Internship Farmer Tools. Director, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Deputy Director Shanty Narra?
Deputy Director, from our Environmental, Solid Waste and Recycling Divisions, we have some upcoming events. Saturday, July twenty-fourth, the divisions will... Let me start that again for the video. From our Environmental, Solid Waste and Recycling Divisions, we have some upcoming events. Saturday, July twenty-fourth, the divisions will hold a paper shred event at Spotswood High School in their parking lot located at one oh five Summer Hill Road in the borough. Then on Saturday, August fourteenth, we'll have another paper shred event in Cranberry at the Cranberry School located at twenty-three North Main Street. Both of these events will be held between the hours of nine A. M. and noon or until, or until the trucks are full. Residents may bring free of charge all paper items for safe shredding and recycling, thus protecting their personal information and identity. Please remind everyone to only include paper items as metals and the like can disable the shredding devices. And for additional information on any program, please kindly visit the county's website or caller divisions at seven three two seven four five four one seven zero. And then I wanted to also join Commissioner Kenny, when he remarked how nice it is to be back here in person. And for the public who can't see, our view is to look out into the audience and see our staff. And everybody in this room that we're looking at has been amazing during this crisis. But I'm going to take my privilege to address specifically the staff from Public Safety and Health. And I cannot say enough about the men and women who work in Public Safety and Health and what they did for all of us during this pandemic. And many times at their own personal safety and working incredible hours and with so much stress. And everything that they did allowed all of us and our family and our friends and our neighbors to be safe and as safe as we could be back in our homes. And so we've lost a lot of people in New Jersey and in Middlesex County, but we would have lost even more if it hadn't been for the dedicated work of all of the people, not just in the county, but especially in Public Safety and Health. Because they were out there in the beginning administering tests and then the vaccine and doing the contact tracing. And all of our personnel that, at the county detention center, they couldn't stay home. They had to keep running the detention center and taking care of our detainees and making sure they were safe. And everybody, everybody in this department from solid waste management, we still did trade events, we still did so many programs. And they, they were all doing this in an effort to allow this county to function. And so they were going to work every day. And even those people in our department who may have had roles that allowed them to work from home, they were pitching in in ways that they never thought they would have to. They were doing contact tracing and they were reaching out to residents about the safety protocol. So I could go on and on, and they deserved for me to go on and on, but I wanted the meeting along. But I just want to say, not just on my behalf, but I know all of the commissioners, we are so grateful. Because not only did you all do the work in such a dedicated fashion, but boy, there was so much compassion and empathy. And that is something that I also appreciate so much. And I'll just say this, Commissioner Tamara and I, along with County Clerk Pinkin, as well as the sheriff, we got the opportunity to go out to the mega center today because it was the last day that the state's mega center was open at the Expo Center. And so they had a ceremony and they were thanking all of the people who were working there, from the nurses and clergy to the doctors, to FEMA, to our National Guard, and to dogs. There were service dogs who were brought there, not only to comfort people who might come in for the vaccine, but for the people working there who really needed pick-me-ups sometimes. So we got a chance to thank them. I'm expressing my thanks to everybody who worked for the county in these incredibly trying times. And it's not over yet. And I wish this was just a huge celebration and everything was back to normal, but we still have a ways to go. And so the last thing I'm going to say is, if you haven't been vaccinated, please, please get vaccinated. It's free, it's available all over the county. Just check into our website. And if, if you want information, it is safe and effective and it's, I think, the best thing you can do to contribute to the safety of all of your loved ones and neighbors. That's all, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Tamara?
Thank you, Director. We have lots of great programs this summer, so mark your calendars for the following events. July twenty-third, eight P. M., rock and roll install. Join us on our second musical review of the summer, an evening of great classic rock and roll with a little soul thrown in. Enjoy songs by Jerry Lee Lewis, Chuck Berry, Rita Franklin, and more. We hope you can join us on the lawn at the Stephen J. Professor Theater in Roseville Park and sit down under the stars. Doors open at five thirty, and the mission this summer is great. Every Wednesday, six thirty P. M. at the Radford Bay Waterfront Park, enjoying scenic Radford Bay Waterfront Park in South Amboy Stadwell, fully in the breezes and great music every Wednesday night. Upcoming acts include Sounds of the Street with Golden Olives at their best, and Parkway Soul performing, performing a variety of Midtown classics. Bring your chair and your dancing shoes, I want to see Nikki out there dancing, and enjoy a free concert at the park. Sunday, July eighteenth, Roosevelt Park. Come and relax on Sunday evening at six P. M. at the Stephen J. Professor Theater for free performances, Nitro and the Woods Trio, playing their favorite classic Broadway and pop and jazz tunes. What a great way to end the weekend. And finally, don't forget to enjoy the summer at the parks. Take a walk, walk along our three point five mile ringway, enjoy some most popular pickleball at our new courts in Thompson Park, which also lit, lit at night. And Monroque Township, or enjoy our relaxing fishing at Roosevelt Park and Ed's Island. There's something for everybody. And I'd too like to thank our departments, Parks and Recreation, and our golf courses. The golf courses had an amazing year last year. People got out because they're able to get out and pop. And our, and our facilities, we're doing such a great job. You know, this year we missed, for a second season, we lost the plays in the park this year, the performances, a great performance of Broadway Crowder's show. You know, but they did a great job with doing some Zoom act, Zoom shows, so they put a lot together to keep, you know, going. Hopefully, next summer, June, we'll be showing three different shows. I know that Something Rotten and Forest Line was supposed to be, you know, the night two years ago. Unfortunately, I think we lost our children's show, we have to get another one. So we're working on it to make sure we have three great shows and we're back in the front of the, in front of the stage watching those great performers perform so great at our, our stages. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. I would like to also say welcome back. Nice to be back to all of the commissioners and all our staff. I have to say kudos to everyone that's been involved in making this county operations function. And as my colleagues stated, this has been a year that none of us on this planet have ever imagined would happen. And I can tell you, it, it really made me proud to say that I live in Middlesex County with our staff, the way they perform. Just incredible, incredible between the testing and the vaccines. I mean, it's a, it was a well, it still is a well-oiled machine and it makes me really feel good. And again, if anyone hasn't been vaccinated, I urge you, please get vaccinated. It really makes a difference and it saves lives. Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
Okay. At this time, I open up the meeting to the public on resolutions only. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick resident, entered New Brunswick today. It's good to be back with you for the first time in well over a year. And good to see you in person and wish you well. My questions are about twenty-one dash eight ninety-two R. This is apparently an agreement between a developer and another government agency in the borough of Milltown. And is somebody telling me what the, you know, what's going on here? I think this is related to the Ori development in Milltown.
Propose.
I think that. The county previously entered into a high contractual interest, purchase of open space at the Ford Avenue site. It's through negotiations and requests by the redevelopment entity in the borough of Milltown have since reached an agreement with the acquisition of additional open space for Ford Avenue redevelopment. First of all, the agreement is to confirm the county's intent to pursue additional open space for passive recreation and open space purposes. And the agreement further set forward the offshore allocation associated with the open space.
Okay. Can any of the commissioners tell me about how much money the county is putting up for this?
Right now, it's going to be a million dollars and I think we want to expand on why we're putting that million dollars.
Oh, you even got that battery pack?
Right now, the matter is pending litigation in U. S. District Court of Superior on asset valuation of the property. And the county is, the purpose of this agreement also is for the county to deposit report a million dollar deposit representing the county's share of the acquisition of the open space parcel. Until there's a final determination from the Board of Condemnation Commissioners, I suggest just compensation valuation of the overall parcel.
Is this normal?
Excuse me?
Is this normal, this, this type of thing, where the county's giving a million dollars to the court to hold in a, in a disputed matter?
Well, as, as our county council office mentioned, that this is going to the condemnation commissioners for final appraisal on the property and for the settling of a price tag. And it's in our best interest right now to put that million dollars as a deposit.
Okay. Did the board get a presentation from the open space council on this? Was there a presentation made?
Yes, yes, it did.
This was the closed session? Great, okay. Don't you normally get those presentations in open session? I know I brought it up before, the six P. M. conference meeting, sometimes you'll have John walking up to this podium and give a presentation. Why wasn't this done in open session, if that's the normal practice?
Mr. Cradville, it's, it's, and right now it's in, in, in the hands of the condemnation commissioners. And it's a part of a litigation. Nikki, correct me if I'm wrong.
Director, if I can just further on that point. The matter was presented in closed session because of simple contract negotiations, and as a result of that, it was discussed in closed session.
Okay. I just think the public needs to know more about this. Obviously, this is an important piece of land in Milltown. The entire purpose of the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency is to deal with this piece of land. I have not been attending their meetings, so I don't know how much public information is being made there. But I do think that the county's going to be putting up a million dollars. The public deserves to know more about what's proposed for the site. I know Ori wants to build housing there. And I have concerns about conflict of interest because the attorney for the Milltown Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency is, of course, the mayor of New Brunswick, Mayor Jim Cahill, who frequently does deals with Ori development here in our city. So I'm just curious if this really is a necessary expense for the county to put up a million dollars to, I guess, purchase area that would not be developable at all anyway, right? You're not taking any land off the table that's developable. This is already waterfront protected lands, no?
This is our normal protocol. We're trying to preserve open space like we've done in the past, and we will continue to look at those open spaces to preserve.
Is it developable land?
We're, we're looking at maybe possibly having a walkway there and then other recreational activities.
Right, but if the developer wanted to, could they build one? Or is it land that's already protected anyway and doesn't need the county's step in and buy it? I see Mr. Kelso nodding, but I, I don't, he's signaling to the deputy to say something, but listen, you say it's not your hands, it is your hands. So when you're saying that, I, I encourage you to use caution on this one. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on any resolutions only listed? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
I don't need to state my name and address. The sunshine law doesn't require me to state my name and address lawyer. Can you please address this, Mr. Kelso?
We've been through this so many times. You need to identify who you are under the sunshine law.
He, he just recognized me.
So why, why won't you just tell us your name for the record? We know you, we, we...
If you know me, if you know me, why do I have to say my name? And he recognized me the moment that the microphone was handed in my hand. Am I recognized? May I continue?
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Is that the law?
State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Under threat of arrest and removal from the meeting, I will state my name, C. from Middlesex County. May I continue?
That's not sufficient. What town are you from?
Edison, New Jersey.
For the record?
South Edison, the best part of Edison. May I continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. Is this microphone on?
Yes, it is.
I agree with everything that Charlie Cradville said. I do dislike the mayor of New Brunswick, Zero Integrity, Mayor Cahill. Anything he does is under suspicion.
Let's talk about the resolution itself.
Exactly. He's part of the resolution. I heard his name matching in the resolution, so can I continue with our...
His name is not on the resolution.
No, but he's a part of what's going on in the town, is firm and whatnot, so can I continue? The fact that the New Brunswick mayor is connected to all this, I know, maybe Democrats always put each other in everything. Somehow we got ex-cops, like Esco and Barber would know, we got ex-cops.
Your, your, your questions are out of order. Let's talk about any resolutions that's listed.
All right.
We're not talking about cops, we're not talking about other people connected or whatever.
Absolutely.
We're talking about the resolution. What is your position on the resolution or any other resolution listed on the agenda?
I'm against the resolution. I don't trust the resolution. I don't trust you, and I don't trust any of the freeholders out there, especially listening to, listening to a lot of the verbal diarrhea I was forced to listen to here today. I'm going to wait for the public comments because I have a lot to say, so I'll see you soon in the public comments.
Anyone else? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak on any resolutions listed on the agenda, on the agenda only.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore. First, I will just, I will speak on the resolution.
First, I will just, I will speak on the resolution, but I'm going to speak towards what the gentleman was saying. And I'm going to say that the city council as well. I feel you're risking people's lives when you are telling them to list where they are living at. And like I said, the reason why I'm going to stay agreeing with the same thing he just said. Wow, you do see something dirty with the police officers, but they keep, keep, keep following you. And I tell you, I'm going to do the same thing.
Talk about the resolutions listed, Danielle.
I do, but you should stop, you should stop letting people tell their full address and just start making moves. Are you from New Brunswick, what area you are from?
I didn't ask you from what, what part of New Brunswick.
Of course, you know me, you know me, of course, you all know me.
But it's for the record purposes as well.
But either way, you should stop doing that for people's safety.
Please speak about the resolutions listed.
I will, and I'm going to speak, speak on the parts of this project with this construction along the water. I say the vast situation of what you're doing, knocking this down due to where what? I was just down to the river, the boy park today. And no one's looking into how high this water has been. And it's not even hurricane season. How that water is coming into your construction site, taking the, all the garbage and everything into the water. Are you, are you thinking about that? But please, I have several, I can bring all of them, but I have several pictures to show you what I'm talking about. Due to where, please be very careful with knocking something down when you're next to water. Out of all the good money that's going on, like I said, those rivers are extremely overboard already. It's not even hurricane season. And I feel that you're taking a really good chance of putting a lot of contamination in the water. So please, like I said, everything's not about money. Everything's not about like real estate that goes on Cahill's mind, knocking down everything. Wow, kind of do this instead. But he cares for his own town, which he does not do, and it's very sad. But like I said, please be careful what you're doing because like I said, you can get extremely a lot of rain. I'm a person, if I travel, I have to do nature pictures. And like I said, I was just down at the river today, how high all this is. It's kind of bound up right into your water, the water, it's going to make the water dirty. So please, pay attention to what you're doing. But you're not an outdoor person. You're making a big mistake. Money's not everything. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion? All in favor? Vote, the motion carries. Okay, is there anyone that needs to vote on any of the terms separately?
I do, Director. I need to state voting on 21-926-R.
I need to recuse myself from 21-9892.
908?
892.
Just one.
Director, I need to see from three items. Item number 21-873-R. Item number 21-924-R. And item number 21-925-R.
Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Commissioner, Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 21-849 through resolution 21-926. Excluding resolutions of the, of 21-892, 21-926, 21-873, 21-924, and 21-925. Do you go to the ones separately?
Is there a motion?
Sign it.
Local?
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum? County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaras? County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes.
And now, Director, would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Nara. That's resolution 21-926.
Is there a motion?
Sign it.
Local?
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
President Aboli.
County Commissioner Tamaras? County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes.
And now, Commissioner Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Esco de Barber. That's resolution 21-892.
Is there a motion?
Sign it.
Local?
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
President Aboli.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaras?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes.
And finally, Commissioner Director, it would be appropriate to consider the three resolutions which were excluded by Commissioner McCollum. And those are resolution 21-873, 21-924, and 21-925.
Motion to vote?
Sign it.
Local?
County Commissioner Esco de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel? County Commissioner McCollum?
President Singh?
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaras?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes.
Okay. This time I open up the meeting to the public.
Right here. I'll go after, Charlie wants to go, I'll go after Charlie. If he may say something that I, that I want to attack you for, so.
Go ahead.
No, Charlie can go.
No, Director, just try to be.
Go.
You're going to bully me into intimidating to go?
I'm asking you to speak now.
Demanding that I speak? No problem. So.
And for the record, this is Chris McPropples from Edison.
Why are you doxxing me? I, Mr. Rios. Mr. Rios, half political operatives from your town, one of which call you Uncle Ronnie Rios, targeting me all the time. You know about this. And you're going to continue to dox me when I just, lawyer, lawyer tells me I want me to answer something on the record. The Sunshine Open Public Meetings Act says when it's the public's time to speak, let them speak. Tell me right now why I have to say my name. God bless that woman across the, over there. She's the real news. She always exposes contaminated property. In Edison, no one ever defends me. Here I am with the county, she defends my rights. Why do I have to say my name?
The county commissioners have a right for the record to have you identify who you are and where you're from. Not necessarily your address.
Can I have your address? Can I have your address, Mr. Kelso? So sorry, can I send you some mail?
I'm not from New Brunswick, New Jersey.
Uh, your address?
I said you don't have to give your address.
Okay, oh, now you don't have to give our address?
I made that perfectly clear before, Mr. McPropples, that you, you have to just give your name and the town that you're from, not just your address.
Stop saying my name. I, I already have a lot of people targeting me because of your radical political networks. Can you please stop doxing me? Where's John Colomina? Why, why is he sitting up here?
He's off on personal business.
How much time do I have left?
Three minutes and 25 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Time Keeper. Yeah, so I want to know why John Colomina's not here. There's a lot of controversy with John Colomina. Of course, he's not here. He knew Jersey Watcher New Brunswick Today were going to be here and put him on the spot, so. According to sources, with the Middlesex County Department of Environment, Health, and Employment as a political operative has been arrested for falsifying overtime records. This employee was putting in records for recycling inspections, which he did not conduct. The employee's name is Ron Sarah from Woodbridge. I would like to keep this between us. Mr. Sarah reports directly to the full-time supervisor in the department who approved his overtime. The overtime was then submitted to Mickey Gross, who oversees the division. Mickey Gross is supervised by Mr. Les Jones, the health officer of Middlesex County. And Mr. Jones is supervised by former deputy chief of the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, Joseph Crisa, who now runs the county health department. I do have a bunch of questions ready for John Colomina. Of course, he's not here. Rios, did you give him the order to stay at home?
He's off on personal business.
He's off on personal business? Can I ask you something? Did Director Armwood take the coronavirus shot?
I don't know. You know what?
Does anyone up there know? Does anybody up there know?
I like you that we have a deceased former colleague that you're going to be talking about.
Wait, did you just say it's because of people like me who have deceased former colleague?
You're talking about a deceased person that was a great human being.
Of course, he's a great human being. And now I'm asking a question. Did he get the coronavirus shot?
I haven't minded.
Because if he got the coronavirus shot and he had adverse effects to it, how can we have Shanti Nara telling everybody else that it's safe?
Because we're getting recommendations from the CDC that made the recommendations that we should get the COVID shot vaccine, yes.
And everyone who took the COVID vaccine already, they're all getting COVID?
That's your opinion.
That's my opinion?
That's your opinion.
It's not my opinion. It's on the record.
You have a medical license?
Exactly. The Shanti Nara has a medical license to tell people.
We're taking the recommendations from the CDC.
It's not even approved by the FDA.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not, there is no coronavirus vaccine approved by the FDA, genius. So how can any of you be up there promoting something? You're not doctors. Shanti, did?
Now, remember one thing. The chair run this meeting.
Okay, through the chair?
Questions to whom?
Through the chair, if anyone can answer this. Does anybody know if Director Armwood took the shot?
Director, thank you, Director May I?
Thank you.
I don't think it is fair for you to ask any of us to divulge personal, private, medical information of anyone. But for you, what really disturbs me, Christmas, is that you were somehow implying that Director Armwood's death was due to COVID. And so unless you're prepared to imply that every single person who may have unfortunately passed in this county.
She's taking up my time.
You're done.
Time's up.
Oh, oh, not by you, son.
It is pretty despicable.
You're dismissable, Nara, and you're, you're out of order.
Time is off. You're out of order.
Director, Commissioner Nara, it is despicable that you would take the passing of Ken Armwood to try and list it and turn it to meet some type of.
I did not. You put words in my mouth. I just asked if he took the vaccine.
I don't know.
Shut up.
We're talking to the family.
You did, you did. It's a shame.
All I asked is digging.
Shame on you.
And for you to be on the meeting saying what a wonderful guy he was and singing his praises months ago to drag him into whatever this is that you're doing.
Did I say anything wrong about him? I didn't say nothing wrong about him. Shame on all of you. As a member of the public, I'm allowed.
You're out of order.
Go fuck yourself, Rios.
Get out of here. Get out of here.
Okay, well, come on.
Get him out of here.
No, I do have to make sure you leave.
You're a piece of shit, Rios. From the time I came in here, you're bullying me. Go fuck yourself.
Anyone else in the public?
Hey, Shanti Nara, go fuck yourself. And go fuck yourself too, Kenny.
Thanks. Hit the bricks. I'm sorry that all of you had to hear that.
I apologize. Good evening once again. Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. And I do want to just say that I really do miss Ken Armwood and God rest his soul. So, yeah, we went through a lot since I last spoke at this podium. I think it was March 8th or 9th of 2020. And that night, a bunch of us were here asking for your help with the school that was being eyeed for demolition by a developer and the infamous people of Brundev Brunswick. And you told us that night you wouldn't be able to help the families that were fighting to save that school. Then the next meeting, you tried to roll back the public's right to speak because it was a telephone meeting. You said you weren't going to have the normal public comment. And you were probably a little embarrassed when you tried to mute me and silence me. And the whole meeting ended up being muted and nobody could talk for a while. And then at the very next meeting, you went and approved a $25 million expenditure for the project that was displacing the kids from the school. The project that you told us you couldn't help us with wasn't within your jurisdiction. You then forked over $25 million to support that private development. And I do want to apply for everyone that I see another $60 million of corporate welfare on your agenda tonight to get into a bad business, parking. Parking is a business on the decline right now. And August 19th at 7:00 p.m., there'll be a hearing here at the county building on borrowing $60 million to start a parking division. Most of that money is probably going to go to building the parking deck for that hospital building that displaced the school. So you're now throwing good money after bad. And instead of prioritizing things that do that, you want to focus on 21st century priorities. One such priority that's going neglected in some places is cybersecurity. So New Brunswick Today has learned that a ransomware attack has compromised an unknown number of police records in Biscataway. The police department was the victim of this attack, which came just three days after an officer pleaded guilty to falsifying records. These records that are now being held for ransom include domestic violence records, records involving at least one fatal incident, and also a bunch of crashes involving township vehicles. This is a serious problem that has not been adequately addressed by the mayor and council there, the Oakland firms running interference and being invasive and dodgy with their answers. I would go so far as to say they are part of covering this up. This has not come out outside of the Biscataway council meetings. And those recordings are available on the New Brunswick Today YouTube channel. I encourage you to check them out. And I do know we have a former Biscataway council member on the board. So I just wanted to ask through you, Mr. Chair, if Commissioner Scott McCollum can tell us if and when she was made aware of this ransomware attack and what the county's doing to protect the municipal governments and their sensitive records from being compromised?
First of all, we're making every effort to keep everything safe and secure. And I'm sure you've seen through the years that we've spent a lot of money to make sure all our records and everything is protected, especially when we have a county prosecutor's office or the sheriff's department or corrections office. Those are, again, we spend a lot of money making sure that we protect that. As far as Biscataway, I'm not aware of what we're talking about. So I can't answer for what happened in Biscataway? Very, I think that's a question that you should ask the Biscataway officials if there's an answer that they could give you.
Wait till you hear the, yeah, wait till you hear the recordings of these meetings. It's really something that's going on there in terms of how they're handling this. And I would say they could do a much better job. But my question was through you for Commissioner Scott McCollum. Can she speak to this issue since it's a real life example of a cyber attack? You know, that they, the community in our county?
Mr. Cradville, I'm not prepared to answer that question. I'm not aware of the ransom attack. Is this something that was just recently happened?
I believe it happened in May of 2018, so.
We talked about some time ago.
Yeah, were you aware of that one?
I had heard about it, yes.
Okay. And what's being done to ensure that the vulnerabilities are not there to be exploited again?
I think it's best probably to take that back to Biscataway council and they'll address it here.
Well, maybe you can help me get them to speak up. Because I remember when you ran the meetings, it was a lot better than it is today. So I hope that I can get those answers because right now the township is not cooperating. And it's unfortunate because this is a serious issue. I do want to also say the county clerk has to answer some questions. And I'll bring them up at a future meeting. God bless you. Have a good night.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore. I have to say, wow, starting out a present meeting, I have to say, you're starting out very harsh, Mr. Rios. Wow, honestly, I thought you would learn to start respecting people and really doing things much more orderly, especially after you got your bit in your rear end. Like I said, how, and I told you how you were disrespecting me. And I told you we're going to come back and bite you. And believe me, the same way with Mr. Egan, same thing when I say somebody disrespects me in a very harsh way. But come on, I'm not the bad person. I'm the person that's faulting New Brunswick be safe again. And like I said, if some of you don't know who I am, you may think the other activists, but I'm a victim as well. For 19 years, how I have to get surgery where I can't sit, sit down. Why? Because the city never takes care of their responsibility? I hope that God bless our engineer here. Please, you may rise to all your hard work. I admit that thankfully, the time where I had, after having my surgery on 6/18/20, where you were responding to me about, as you walk, something, please, we go to the French and Easton Avenue to our South on Red. God bless you. You took care of it. I thank, thank you. And on October 15, 2020, you contacted regards to Livingston Avenue and certain streets. I thank you. And for 5/14, I was there with Front to Easton Avenue. Like I said, another situation, and with No Turn On Red, and I was standing there. I do, I do thank you for all your hard work. I know you're a person with a very good heart. Please pass your heart to other, other, others up there. Thank, thank you. And I will say, for Livingston Avenue, Mayor Cahill, the engineer in New Project Department had nothing to do with it. I provided over 1,000 pictures to our engineer. I fought for Livingston Avenue to be approved for $6.6 million by trying to provide evidence, seeing what was in danger. Kids were in danger. How many people got killed last year? Are there three people getting killed? Yes, like I said, I will not let the mayor Cahill take credit for anything that's been going on in Livingston Avenue. And believe me, our engineer, he can tell you, I provided how many pictures. Ooh, No Turn On Red here. Ooh, you cannot do this with each kid. And believe me, our engineer, he can tell you, I provided comedy pictures. Ooh, no turn on Red here. Ooh, you cannot do this with each kid, kids, and all. And I thank you so much. God bless me with your good heart for responding to me, definitely do yourself, or not, due to I wasn't able to get to the meetings, due to so much pain. But like I said, thank you so much for your good heart and your good work. Livingston Avenue is looking great again. Thank you. My other situation I wanna talk about, where I just talked with the board, please confirm to me for far as the Boyd Park, it's at Middlesex County and New Brunswick. Who's responsible for the maintenance at Boyd Park, the canalway? I meant tunnels. I don't have, I'm having to fill my time to really show all pictures, but wow, you can't even walk through this. Who's in charge? Is it the city or the county? Please tell me. Not for our record.
In a respectful manner, like I always am with you, Mr....
Please, don't fill my time. Just ask my question. Answer my question.
Boyd Park is a city park?
It says county and city on it, so please tell me who's responsible. It's been over almost two years. No one cut the trees down anymore from Howard Park. You can't even come through there. Walk through there. I will leave the pictures with you. You conduct, you conduct with the city or not, due to where they say it's your property, you say it's theirs. But something is gonna be happening, and due to where, like I said, the water is extremely high, and back there, the garbage and everything, polluting the Robertson River, like I said, same thing with Milltown, due to all the water rising. It's high already. Hurricanes haven't even started yet. And though I'm not, I'm not here not to fill my time, please, engineer, will you please confirm with me, with all the new lights on Livingston Avenue, does New Brunswick have the authority to change a light bulb when it's out, or does it have to be the county?
Yes, sir. Okay, my understanding is New Brunswick contracted public service to maintain the lights and install the ornamental lighting. So they would tell public service to replace the light bulb?
I thank you for hearing that on record, due to where plenty of times at city council meeting, Mr. Tom Bellini would say, "That is a county street. We have no authority to do that." That's why I wanted it on record to show you. I know you told me it personally. I thank you, and I still like to hear that on record, due to where he can't say it's not their responsibility for the lights to be changed, due to where that was a cause of the man getting hit, killed on the corner of Haney and Livingston last year, due to where I told you. And I have four months. It's on the record. As a personal opinion, you can't say I'm crazy. Wow, four months, I told you. The man got killed, nobody changed the light.
Thank you. And in reference to your question, I will have, can you, Larry Narrows, can you find out who's responsible for the maintenance of that park where she's talking about and bring it to their attention? If it's our responsibility, let's make sure that we clean it up.
Director?
Yes.
Also, if I could, if there is a street light out, and I believe this is anywhere in the county, if they're managed by public service, you can call up, a resident themselves can call up public service. Just have the poll member that's on the poll, and they normally have a hotline public service. They can call and let them know. Just putting it out there. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Sir, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Joe Tishine, Edison, New Jersey. First of all, I would apologize to ladies and gentlemen on the board. Unfortunately, I mean, as the resident, we have to deal with the person that had to leave the room here, and I really wanna apologize. I'm sorry about that. I really wanna bring up the Silver Lake warehouse in Edison. Commissioner Tamara probably knows a lot more about it, but I just wanna make sure that the county's gonna take over that land, because it's very dangerous over there for the residents of Edison. And I just wanna make sure that the county takes over that land so it's preserved and notes a historic part of Edison. Thanks again.
Thank you. And we have made a commitment there. We've got a request for that, so that's under review or study or consideration. Anyone else in the public? Is there a motion to the votes? All in favor? Pro, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Pro, motion carries, meaning adjourned.
Yes. Hey, BJ. My pleasure to finally meet you face to face, but we have seen each other before, because you were here like pre-pandemic a little bit. You was. You know what I saw there? When you first, there is, when you first interviewed, worked on, you were at Paul B. H.'s office, and I believe I met you at that time, because you were already hired, but not officially here.
I understand, but you're hardworking. Like I said, I just wanted to confirm everything on video, live video. Thank you. Well, honestly, if you, I was coming by, you were just letting me do pictures, and I was up there, like, story, story about all this.